Good evening and welcome. As you all know, my name is Dr. Ryan Colleen and I am blessed to be president of the Lord's Pop on Academy. We're thrilled to have you all with us this evening and we know that guests will continue to join us throughout the evening, but we did want to begin because we have a very full program of information to share with everyone. We are so grateful for you taking some time out of your busy summer to spend some time with us and we hope that you'll find the evening informative and we have certainly made all of our best efforts to be prepared to respond to all of your questions as best as we possibly can. We know this has been a crazy journey these past several months and this is such a hardship for all of us as we navigate these uncharted waters. It feels so good though to be back with you although distant as we are. We know that although we are separated by space, we are united in mission as we always are and we ever whenever we gather, we are in the presence of all of you. So as we always begin any program at NFA, we want to begin with prayer. So let us begin in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Lord, we pray that you continue to bless and guide Lord Pop on Academy so that we make the best decisions to support all the members of our community and that all of us in one global human family remain safe and make our way through these challenging times to attend. Continue to bless us and guide us in all of our decisions and unite us in a mutual commitment to keeping our community safe and making the best decisions to support the beautiful children who are in our care each and every day. We ask this in your name through Christ our Lord. Amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. So first and foremost, we are grateful to the NFAPA for helping to support and sponsor tonight's town hall event and we are excited for their leadership, our new presidents of the NFAPA, Molly Egerton and Chrissy Cursey. And it has been a great partnership already. You know, I have to say I thank you for staying in the course because you didn't know what you were getting into and you said yes about a year ago. But I have been grateful for their collaboration and their support and their advocacy as parents and partners in this mission. And so we are very grateful for them for hosting tonight and I give them the stage to share a few words of this. Thank you Chrissy and Molly.
Thanks, Ryan. Hi, everyone. As Ryan just mentioned, Chrissy and I are leading the Parents Association this year. Like you, we are first and foremost parents and we have questions and concerns about the return to school in September. We appreciate all of the hard work and diligence that the NFA prep team has put into creating our reopening plan and we're grateful for the chance to have a conversation tonight about the return to school, to learn more about the plan and to have questions answered. The role of the NFAPA has evolved over the years and continues to change. This year, we have a unique opportunity to try new things, make some changes, and respond to the evolving needs of our community. We want to know, what do you want? What do you think? How can we work together to serve our children, NFA, and each other?
Our Parents Association is made up of each and every one of you. Parents that are hardworking, parents that adapt, parents that love, parents that are strong. And we are here for each other. We are not just an association, we are an alliance. This year, we urge you to share your ideas, share your hopes, tell us what you need, what you want, share your concerns with each other and with us. We will work together to continue to be NFA strong. We want to thank Dr. Colleen for inviting us to kick off tonight's town hall. We're grateful to be an alliance of parents that can stand with, support, and work beside the NFA leadership, faculty and staff, and teachers. Molly and I will quickly leave you with a list of our fall community events and now I will stop talking because I know we all want to get to the rest of the presentation. Thank you for listening.
Thank you Molly and Chrissy. And no, we are so grateful to have the partnership of NFAPA and it is such a true and genuine partnership which you all are a part of. This is an incredible ministry, this school community of Lord Pop on Academy, and it is so much the better because of our active engagement of our parents. And we see it as a blessing in normal times, we see it as critically essential during these challenging times. And definitely preparing for tonight, having you share your questions and comments and items for further consideration have been critically important to us as we continue our plans. We will try our best to be able to respond to as many of them as possible and some of them, as we will share, are still in the formation based on feedback that we're getting from all of you. In a few minutes, I will turn things over to the rest of our panelists. As you will see from our previous communications, we see three, you know, core areas of the plan, although they obviously integrate very closely. So we have health and safety and any of those measures, we have the academic components and then all of the facility changes and logistical changes that we have implemented to support those other two areas. In viewing and vetting the questions ahead of time, we have been able to have responses to many of the themes that will come up. So each of our panelists will present an overall summary of some of the key questions that we have received and then at the end, we will allow time for further questions to be submitted. We ask you to use the Q and A feature and that when sending a comment, please select all panelists. I will moderate the questions, but it's easier for us to navigate if everyone puts them in that one format so that we can see them and we would not want to miss one inadvertently if it's not sent through that method. If we cannot get to all of the questions, then we will have follow-up communications, we'll be having them either way, but we'll make sure that we speak to anything that we missed if we see in reflection after tonight that there's anything that we were not able to cover. We will also make this town hall available to our community at a later date after this presentation. If there is an item that we feel we could more confidentially respond to a specific family need, we might not present that for the full town hall, we think it's more properly shared in a one-on-one conversation. So again, it has been my great blessing to serve in NFA for these past few years and it is incredible to see the community support that we have had, especially during these very, very challenging times. I am especially grateful to all of the staff and faculty of NFA for the countless hours they have contributed this spring and through this summer. I will tell you that our staff has not taken a summer recess. They have been actively engaged throughout the summer, whether on the prep team, on the curriculum council, on the many, many subcommittees, planning everything from outdoor learning spaces to drop-off and dismissal logistics to classroom setup. And it is an incredible team of great expertise, which you should be very, very grateful. And the way they give so lovingly of themselves is to be commended. These are challenging times and we are all making sacrifices. And I think and I know that I often share this favorite quote of mine from the Citrus of St. Joseph with all of you, so bear with me, but it is something that runs through my head each and every day throughout the day, that we live and work so that all may be united with God and with one another. The mission of the Citrus of St. Joseph is so integrated with relationship and that's where we all are right now. Every precaution that we take, we know that it's not just about our own personal safety, but the safety of our community. And us making that commitment and abiding by these protocols and making these personal sacrifices is about being in a genuine relationship with everyone in our community and keeping everyone safe. We all are going to have to make sacrifices this year and we understand that and we are all going to respond to new needs as they evolve. But that is who we are and that is who we have been for 100 years navigating so many challenging times and how we will only sustain ourselves through these challenges by leaning in on one another and leaning in on our mission that we are to be in relationship with everyone. Personally, I just wanted to share that I know that this is a sentiment that I think resonates with every member of our staff. As a parent myself, I know all of the concerns that run through our heads each and every day. I know how disconcerting these times can be. I also know that all of us on the NFA staff, we take our responsibility every day in seeing all the 350-some children that come to NFA as being our children during the period of time that you have entrusted them in our care. And we treat every decision as we approach the decisions we make for our own families. And I know that you appreciate that and I know that with that kind of level of engagement from our staff, we can make this work and we can keep everyone safe. And I'm so grateful to all of the staff and to all of you for your partnership. So our three sets of panelists, we will begin with Bridgette Bradenham, our incredible nurse and NFA parent and alum, who will speak from her own expertise on how we have aligned all of our safety measures with the best guidance and protocols of the C, the American Academy of Pediatrics, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Education Department, and the Public Health Department of the City of Philadelphia. And all of our decisions are made in concert with that guidance. Next, we will throw things over to Mrs. Paluso and Ms. Craig to talk about the academic components and then I will share some more details and responses to some of the questions concerning facilities and other logistics. Again, I would ask that you hold sharing your questions in the Q and A until the end of the presentations so that we can best field them because many of them may be already presented in the first section. And so now, without further ado, I give our incredible school nurse, Bridgette Bradenham, over to you to share some feedback on some of your questions. Take it away.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Ryan, for that wonderful introduction. It's a privilege to work with everybody here and I'm going to try and keep it somewhat short, but there was some common threads when we were going through the questions and I'm kind of going to touch on those topics before we open up the forum at the end. One was concerning masks, one was concerning differential diagnoses, and one was just a couple scenarios that, you know, hopefully won't, but will probably play out throughout this fall. Again, thank you for your questions. Every question we get gives us just another perspective on how we can get face-to-face learning this fall. So here we go, masks, Angela, questions pertaining to masks. So masks are required on campus. They're required for students and staff while inside the building and while outside when social distancing or six feet of distance cannot be maintained. There will be mask breaks required at the discretion of the teacher and there will be a location in the classroom that will be socially distant and well-ventilated for which the child will be able to go and have a mask break. In the future, we'll tell you kind of how often they'll happen, but right now, that's what we can give you. Face shields alone are not acceptable, face coverings, a face shield can be worn with a mask. And we have been asked how the mask-wearing policy will be enforced on campus. I wish we could tell you exactly, you know, how it will be enforced and Nancy Paluso will be walking around campus, I will be as well when I, you know, when I can or when I'm called. We are training our teachers on how to properly wear a mask and take off a mask and we're hoping, or we're not even hoping, we're saying to our students that, you know, we're showing them how to properly put it on and take it off. Our approach with the mask-wearing is that just as a teacher would tell a student if he was doing something that was going to cause harm to himself, to stop or discipline him in that situation, you know, we would hope that if a student was not wearing a mask properly, that something would be said to that student. Next slide, please. Differentiating COVID versus other illnesses. This fall, you know, due to the fact that children haven't seen each other as much this summer, there will probably be an uptick in illnesses when we go back to school, you know. And differentiating if a student with COVID walks in as opposed to, and someone has the flu or allergy symptoms, is going to be difficult. We will be sending home anyone with the following symptoms: a fever greater than 100 degrees Fahrenheit, runny nose, cough, fatigue, muscle aches, vomiting, and diarrhea. If this symptom can be attributed to anything other or any other medical syndrome, please set up a quick virtual visit with your pediatrician and have them write a note and then send the note to both the teacher and myself. My suggestion for the fall would be to get your flu shot, that will be one less bug that we have to worry about and then prior to school, try and line up someone that will pick up your child if they are sick because we are putting, we put in our policy that they should be picked up an hour within going to the nurse's office. Scenarios. As many of you, we've all been up kind of working through these scenarios and many parents have questions pertaining to them, which I completely understand and as a parent myself, I'm trying to work them out as well. We will ultimately be going off the guidance of the Philadelphia Department of Public Health, who is, who the Pennsylvania Department of Health refers us to for being within the Philadelphia city limits. But I can do to the best of my ability, tell you what steps we would take. So what happens if your child or if a child in my child's class tests positive for COVID-19? If your child was in close contact with a classmate, which is defined by the CDC as six feet of an infected individual for 15 minutes, your child and siblings should quarantine for 14 days. During that time, if your child becomes symptomatic, you should contact their healthcare provider who may suggest a COVID test. We will be in close contact with the Philadelphia Department of Public Health and their guidance may change based on the evidence of communal spread at that time. After isolating for 14 days, we will not require a COVID test for the child to return. But they will have to show that it has been 10 days since the onset of symptoms, they have been fever-free for three days or 72 hours and their symptoms are improving. Another question was if a parent or student has been in close contact with a non-NFA person who tests positive, is the NFA parent or child required to report this contact to the NFA? The answer is yes. There will be a waiver that families will be signing prior to the start of school, asking that they indicate if they have a known exposure to COVID-19. In addition, parents will be completing daily surveys that ask their children if they have had contact with somebody who has a confirmed case or who is a confirmed case. And that's going to be, you know, trusting the community and that, you know, everybody's in this together and we're working to be as transparent as possible. Will a student with a confirmed positive have to retest before coming back to school? I kind of mentioned this before, the short answer is no. We will weigh the feedback from the student and the healthcare provider, but the current recommendations are, as I stated before, it has to be at least 10 days from the onset of symptoms and fever-free on, you know, no Tylenol, no Motrin for 72 hours and their symptoms have to be improving before they can return to school. The next question, which I understand is on everybody's mind, is what is the threshold for closing the school? And I wish I had an answer for you right now, it will really depend on what the Philadelphia Department of Public Health recommends and the evidence of spread within our school community. Hopefully this won't happen, but if it's, you know, between grades and there's a sign that it's being passed within our community, that would definitely assure that the school would be closing. So by taking the aforementioned precautions, we'd hopefully avoid that. We are really fortunate that the houses and most grades have their own entrance and exit and also have their own bathrooms. So hopefully we can isolate cases and contact trace and, you know, slow that quickly. If one child exhibits six symptoms at home, but another doesn't, do they both have to stay home? The answer is no. They would contact the healthcare provider for additional feedback, but if they have not been in close contact with someone who has tested positive for COVID, both students would not have to stay home, the symptomatic child would. Like symptomatic, meaning has any of the symptoms of COVID and I would think that the family at that point would call their pediatrician. If a child has a fever but does not have COVID, can they return to school after 24 hours or not until after 72? The answer is 72 hours this year. After this is behind us, it might go back to 24 without Tylenol or Motrin, but for now, it's 72. So that just ran through with some questions that we received, you know, from a couple people and please continue to send more questions and reach out to me personally if you need to. And yeah, I really, I really think this is doable, we can do it together, we have to just be transparent and have trust in one another and, yeah, and work together. So I guess I'm done my part of the slides and I look forward to hearing from some families afterwards. So thank you.
Thank you, Bridgette. So I'm going to go a little bit out of sequence in the fact that we did get two questions that I think were part of what you shared, Bridgette, so if you wouldn't mind, I think it'd be helpful just to, Matt, to respond to them now.
Yes.
So one would be, will we be notified of all COVID cases reported in the school?
We will be notified that a COVID case is in the school.
I think, I think as a parent, will you be notified? So I think in general, we'll be focusing our communication to those students who could have been in contact with the student.
Yes.
So in general, like your class, or if there's classes that we think could have had contact, they would be notified, but not the entire school and we couldn't identify what students had been found positive for COVID. Correct, Bridgette?
Yes, like their home room, as well as the locations where they have been, they will be notified if the child was in those areas.
And then the other question dealt with contact tracing, will we be doing our own or depend on the Health Department? And I would say that we'll be in concert, as best as we can identify and contact trace within our community, we will, but we'll also be informed by the guidance of the Public Health Department as far as what information they have for our geographic community or any reports that they've received.
Yes, correct.
So we are going to, oh, there's some more questions coming in for help, but I do want to make sure we have time for each section, so we'll come back to some of those other topics in a moment now. I'd like to move things over to academics before we return to the other questions. And we now have Mrs. Nancy Paluso and Ms. Shannon Craig. I know we are so blessed to have these incredibly talented and expert academic leaders leading our academic programs. I think, you know, for most of you, your first introduction to NFA probably involved Mrs. Paluso as she welcomed your little guys and the beauty of her seeing them through this journey and knowing them through this process has been incredible and then having Shannon move into her expanded role to collaborate on the academic program and curriculum with her colleagues has been unbelievable this summer. So we are so grateful to both Shannon and Nancy for their work and they're going to respond to some of the general topics we know we've already received. Take it away, ladies.
Thank you, Ryan. Nancy, you're muted.
Thanks, Shannon. I came with the three-year-olds who are celebrating this year as their 100th, are 100th and they're graduating year, so we celebrate this 11-year journey together. To provide some more details around the topics that fall under the academic category, we're going to take time to both review and overview the structures and plans that we've put in place to achieve an adaptable approach to both teaching and learning. And we feel that we cannot address these academic updates without first starting with a huge thank you to our teachers. This time in and of itself brings about a shift in pedagogy and practice and our teachers have once again stepped up to the plate. It's because of their energy and time and commitment that we are truly confident in this plan. We've organized these talking points based on the questions that were received by, from parents since our master plan went out and most of the questions that we have received fall under these specific categories that you see here.
Shannon? Next slide, please, Angela. Thank you. Hi, everyone. As Ryan introduced me, I'm Shannon Craig. I've been in various roles at NFA over the past 16 years, but stepping into the role as Director of Curriculum and Innovation comes at a very critical time. So in this hard work, I can't help but be grateful that NFA has this role in place as we are tasked with doing such new thinking around curriculum and instruction. I have to take a minute here to echo Nancy and say thank you to our teaching staff. Teachers have been so willing to collaborate, to think outside the box, collectively learn and share, and they're doing so with such grace. I also want to say thank you specifically to the Curriculum Council members. We are meeting multiple times each week and have been throughout the summer. It is their work that gives me great energy and confidence to present this plan. As Nancy mentioned, we felt that coming into tonight, it would be important to provide an overview in our thinking and planning to best speak to the questions that showed some commonality in the area of academics. So one area that we'd like to cover to get us started is our planning around multiple scenarios. So all approaches have been considered, full face-to-face, full distance learning, and hybrid. Nothing has really been off the table. We want to acknowledge the thinking around a hybrid model. Most schools typically put that model in place due to the size of their physical spaces and their class sizes and at this point, we are able to accommodate all students on campus with required social distancing, so there is not a need for a hybrid schedule. While we do plan for reopening with students on campus, following all health and safety protocols, we are planning for this adaptable approach to teaching and learning so that we can reach our learners who need to stay at home as well. We are still working to gain a full count of students who will be starting the school year at home and then we also have to factor in that some students will need to be at home at varying times. All of our planning is done with this adaptable approach in mind that will easily transfer over to a full distance learning model if we need to plan for that, if we need to go that route. That planning is in place already. If we are, in the event that NFA has to fully close, we continue to review the feedback received by teachers and parents and students from the distance learning experience that took place this spring and that truly guides our planning if this has to happen in the future. We know there were plenty of good things that could be carried over from that and there's some room for revision. Again, back then, it was a really quick shift into that mode of teaching and our teachers and NFA as a whole really rose to the occasion, but we know that if a distance learning model is called for, there are many scheduling and logistical factors that are being considered. But our preparation for our teaching staff and as a teaching staff is sound in the use of structures and strategies and tools that could easily transfer over to this model if need be. We'd like to provide you with further detailed communication in the near future so that you have a clear idea of what that model would look like day to day if we need to move into that model. So the next question that formed some of our planning for tonight is how will on-campus learning differ from at-home learning? This is certainly a unique situation that we find This is certainly a unique situation that we find ourselves in, in education. We are tasked to do so. So much new thinking around what learning typically looks like in our classrooms. But of course, for those knowing that their children will be at home, the question often comes up, thinking or asking, how will at-home learning differ? So we are hoping to provide some more clarity around the use of the playlist here. This plan was described in the academic section of our master plan. But I do feel like it's, it's nice to have this time to present it a little bit more fully. As we view the engagement of learning for our students, we do our planning, knowing that the learning will take place no matter what setting they are in. Teachers will provide a playlist that will be a roadmap for students to reach end goals or objectives. And this playlist will be released weekly or daily, depending on grade. And both students at home and on campus will be following the same playlist that's put out by their teacher. So to define playlists a little bit more specifically, it is a mix or a sequence of synchronous, which would be live opportunities, and asynchronous, which would be independent opportunities for learning, that connect directly with the resources needed to do that learning. So it's kind of like one-stop shopping. Everything needed to complete a learning task should be right there in the playlist. It is a sound structure that allows for the plan to be communicated. And there are options for building in some choice and flexibility around pacing. But this structure allows the learner to know their plan, while it also provides clear expectations and a clear understanding for all of those supporting the students, whether they are on campus or at home. So it is written for the students, but parents, learning support teachers, academic tutors, anyone providing support for our learners will have a clear understanding of the plan and know how and where to access materials and the resources needed. It's also important to say that the playlist structure is in place and it will include scheduled checkpoints that are live with teachers and also live checkpoints with other classmates or peers. So this brings us to the next question that came up, which is more so around what do live opportunities mean for students at home when they're not right there with the teacher or right there with their classmates? Next slide, please. So there are many ways that we are planning for live opportunities to happen. Teachers are engaged in planning what goes on their playlist with these examples in mind. There will be opportunities for some one-on-one lifetime that might be in the form of a check-in or a lesson or an opportunity to confer or provide feedback. There might be some opportunities for small group live sessions, which in, you know, in the teacher's world, we're providing more like targeted instruction or it could be a lesson. Our teachers are encouraged to facilitate collaboration between peers to make that happen and that connection to happen between at-home learners and, and on-campus learners. Or again, an opportunity to confer or provide feedback. And then there's some whole group live sessions that could be opportunities for connection, which might be focused around community building or interactive learning tasks as a class. Nancy, you're up next.
Okay. And one of the other questions was what would the day look like for our at-home learners? So with the use of the playlist, as Shannon has explained, the engagement and learning will be there for all students and expected from all students. So the experience may not be exactly parallel because students will be in different settings, at home and then on campus. We thought the best way to give an idea for this was to give you an example. So in a class on campus, a teacher at any particular day might schedule a, to teach us, or might be planning to teach a skill to a large or a small group. After that skill is taught, then the children normally would work individually or with a partner to practice the skill. Sometimes they're working on a project or in centers to complete different choice works. The teacher would then be working with a small group or an individual on that particular skill or lesson or another. Children at home will have the lesson. Now Shannon explained synchronous and asynchronous times. So the children will have the lesson as well. And then will follow the playlist just as the children are in the classroom. So if the, there are times when those at home will be paired with those at school, mentioned, working together. There will be times when those at home will work at, at work individually on practicing the skills taught, taught or completing choice work. They will not be online while they're doing those types of work. They wouldn't be in front of the teacher, with, with one-on-one time with the teacher when they were doing those kinds of works in the classroom. We will not be live streaming all day. That's something we need to be clear about because it's not developmentally appropriate. The children learning at home will have the same playlist as Shannon mentioned as those on campus and will be expected to be engaged for the better part of a school day, though it won't all be online. As when in school, one day might be different than the next day because it depends on what lessons are planned and the best way to execute and practice those lessons. So on campus and at home, learners will be engaged throughout the length of, of a school day. It's very difficult right now to offer a specific length of time or a frequency of session in regards to those live interactions. But we'll be working on this and just as teachers use assessment to drive their instruction, we will use our observations and our work with all of this planning to drive how it changes either day-to-day or in the future, depending on what the needs are. And we have to remember that the, the numbers are still needed for this commitment survey. So any of you who haven't filled it out, we're asking you to do so. And the age of the material and the appropriateness for each age level certainly goes into this preparation. Shannon?
So the next slide just goes back to our, our general outline. There were, most questions came around the learning scenarios. So that's why we wanted to give that more detailed overview. But we also want to touch on the topic of our use of outdoor space. We are prioritizing that for class time, lunches, and recess time. There is a group of staff members working to iron out these details. And many factors go into this planning. I wanted to share some of those factors. And then hopefully in the near future, we'll be able to provide you with more of a detailed plan for use of outdoor space. But the factors that are being considered are specifying locations for each cohort so that each cohort has a designated spot on campus and that will promote the use of that space as much as possible. It will be for a single cohort's use. We do know that time outside will vary based on factors like weather, based on factors like instructional plans and need for materials that that particular class or activity might need. There are, you know, we're acknowledging that some teachers and students might have some environmental allergies that need to be taken into consideration. So we would accommodate those needs on an individual basis. We're looking into shade coverage for all of these outdoor spaces. We're looking into tent rentals and purchases as well. The, the group of staff members working on this is a varied group of perspectives. We try to cover people in most buildings across the campus.
Another few questions came in regarding our Montessori program. And I think that the most important thing that people need to know is that we're maintaining the philosophy of the program using social distancing. So as part of the Montessori program, children are, you know, work independently. They learn to be independent learners. They have choice work. Though that, that all continued. So how you say, or if somebody asks, how will they have that with movement throughout the day? And that's one of the reasons why we asked for yoga mats, one of the many reasons. But there are also desks in the Montessori classrooms and they're all will be appropriately socially distanced. Some part, some questions are about the, the materials and how will they be used and shared and cleaned? So many, not, I can't say most, but some of the materials that would normally have to have been used by either child after child or shared with a child, with children, we've purchased as individual ones. So for any of you who are familiar with, everybody has their own stamp game now. And checkerboard, as a matter of fact, the, the older students who use checkerboard have their own. Some of those things, obviously, we couldn't get for individuals. And so they will share. And when they do that, the, the, the children will certainly be washing hands before they do everything. And I think that's something that we didn't emphasize even when Bridgette was speaking, that before they do anything, they wash hands. And then as they finish anything, they wash hands. So all, and then before another child or group of children would use the next work, it will be sanitized. Gloves will also be available if they need to do something. A couple of people had asked about like science labs and that's it. These children will also have gloves available to them. Besides the Montessori program, we had some miscellaneous topic questions. And one of them were how are the cohorts being developed? Some of that is easy, as you know, because they go from one grade to the next. Some of it is not so easy. And there is a lot of work that goes into forming a cohort. And a lot of it is teacher input because they know your children so well. They know who works best with whom, who needs a break from each other, et cetera, et cetera. They know the, the mentality, not the mentality, but the personalities of the children. You don't want everybody who's shy in the same room. So there's a lot of work that goes into those cohorts. I will tell you that this year as well, for the older students, the consideration for accelerated math courses was also part of this cohort development. The children who are in seventh and eighth grade in particular need to be in those math groups to, in order to complete algebra. The, the, those who are in accelerated groups, as you know, the, the pacing is very quick. So those were also part of the cohort decision-making. And all of this year's cohorts were formed to keep everybody healthy and safe. And that was our top priority for students and staff. There are, there's very minimal student intermingling as much as, as, as few as possible. And as well as teachers, the teachers go to the, the students this year. This, students are not going from class to classes they have normally done for the most part. And so we want to keep everybody safe, and safe while keeping our academic rigor high. And another question was that if a, if a family plans to have students at home, can they change their mind and send them to school? Yes, this adaptable teaching model prepares us to be flexible. It's fluid. We know that there will be varying needs at various times for families or even different members of families to be on campus or at home learning. And we've, we've been prepared for this. We will say though, that if there is a change in somebody's, you know, abilities to come back to school, we would ask that it happened at the beginning of a week. Ryan, I think we've covered everything academically that we can for the questions that we were provided.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Paluso. Thank you, Ms. Craig. That was a really comprehensive overview. And I know that there are some additional questions coming in. Before we go to the questions we've been receiving, there were some additional topics that I wanted to speak to now. Some build upon what has been shared with you previously. So I know one of the questions that we've gotten in general terms is, how are we confident that we are able to provide for a safe social distance learning environment here on campus? And I think that first and foremost, part of that is we are blessed with a large campus and large learning spaces and multiple buildings. With 13 beautiful acres of outdoor space and seven distinct buildings, we are able to give cohorts distinct times where they are separated socially distanced. And we have space within the classrooms. You see, I'm here in Sister Rose Anne's class and we're just in the first phase of doing the room arrangement. But we are carefully measuring and we are removing accessory in, to the classroom to streamline them as much as possible. We've obtained storage units to do that. We also are utilizing all staff in different ways so that we can best be observant and maintain these practices and protocols. This is responsibility that we will all be taking on to various degrees. We can talk about many layers of cleaning and disinfecting that happen throughout the day and on an ongoing basis after school hours. First and foremost, every learning space and every office space is equipped with cleaning supplies. So all of us can participate in the regular routine cleaning to keep ourselves safe and have, you know, easy access to hand washing facilities and, or hand disinfecting facilities so that we are doing that practice on a regular basis. Our facility staff have newly designed role descriptions and responsibilities throughout the day to do multiple passes around high-touch surfaces. In addition to that, we partner with Interstate, our cleaning company. And they will be expanding their staff to include a day porter so that we'll have an additional cleaning staff person here during the day. So restrooms will be cleaned every four hours at least. And we will be using all restrooms at 50% capacity. We will also be cleaning up after the lunch in other learning spaces or outdoors and cleaning high-touch surfaces with multiple staff throughout the day, being areas like the water filling stations, handrails, doors and door jams, stairwells, and within the classroom spaces, we'll also have facility to clean on a regular basis. We have, I can't show it to you right now. So we have sprayers that will have an alcohol, 70% alcohol-based disinfectant in them that can be used throughout the day to easily spray materials that need to be used again by another student. In the evenings, we'll have both a layer of cleaning and disinfectant. So there'll be deep cleaning done of all spaces with a focus on the academic spaces where children are every evening with electrostatic spraying of disinfectant every evening as well. The regular deep cleaning is done with bleach or a bleach substitute so that we are aligning all of our choices on what we use, that it is safe and acceptable to use around children and also lines with the CDC recommendations on how we can effectively kill any possible transmission of particulates that could be in our learning spaces. So we will continue to, to be vigilant in monitoring that. And again, all of us are, are critical in making sure that we keep our spaces clean throughout the day. I think now we've had a lot of questions coming in and I want to make sure that we can get to as many of them as possible. So I am just going to be looking at the submitted questions. And I'm sure if we missed any that had come in previously, we will try to make sure that we speak to them all. So. So. Nurse Brainham. So we did have a question in the health area as far as, will we be requiring, or why would not be requiring a COVID test before a student or staff member returns to campus after a confirmed case?
So that's not currently the guidelines by the Pennsylvania, like the suggestion, suggestion of the Pennsylvania for reopening schools that was provided on July 3rd. It could change, but as of that time, it was not a requirement to have a COVID test or a negative COVID test prior to returning to school. And I think that's also seconded by the CDC. They need to have 10 days symptom-free and 72 hours, no fever, with no Tylenol or Motrin onboard, and symptoms have to be improving.
And I think, Bridgette, and I think you, like one factor in, in many of the guidelines are is making sure that we have clear, easily, you know, attainable procedures so that we can get full compliance. And so that if, and we don't want to have families not be transparent about a case participate because we have made it more challenging as long as we are aligning with those recommendations to keep the family safe. Would you agree with that summary?
I would. I would. If, if the doctor, because we are recommending that anybody who is symptomatic reaches out to their healthcare provider. If the healthcare provider recommends a COVID test, you know, they would have to get a COVID test and quarantine for 14 days. But still, a negative test would be required for the admission back to school.
Great. Thank you. Great, thank you. Another question came, well, two questions. One is about temperature checks and how that'll be handled. And then another about how will we make sure that every family has completed their survey on a daily basis? And what will that protocol look like?
Okay, so the, the first is the temperature checks. Our plan is in the survey, we're asking the families to take a temperature at home. And if it's above 100, 100, say, you know, they're not going to be allowed to come to school. Then we are going to be taking temperature checks when they arrive. It's going to be part of the arrival process. And we will be taking another temperature check around lunchtime. This could change and we, you know, in the future, but as of the start of school, but those are the times that we're going to be taking temperature checks. In terms of the survey, the question was regarding, what was the question around survey? Sorry. Oh, how, how is everyone going to know the survey and have access to it? We're having an app, so WebEx is hopefully going to be accessible by parents. I'm sorry, why did I say WebEx? Magnus is going to be, you know, accessible by parents by later on this week. And Magnus is the one that's supporting our survey. And our survey will be provided by an app and we're hoping, and I think it will happen, but everyone at the doors will have administrative properties to be able to see who has completed the survey when a student arrives. And again, that's why we're stressing that families have it completed at 7:00 AM. So if they arrive at 7:30 till 8:00, we are, we are able to see that it's completed.
Yes, and to build on that, so as Bridget mentioned, the parent portal is in its final phase of construction, should be rolling out within the next few days. And when you reach your credentials to access the parent portal, you will also receive access to enter into Magnus Health, where you will submit all of your health forms. And that will track all of our health documentation, including the daily survey. And we will be giving you updates on all these new protocols as they get finalized or refined over the next week. So there'll be multiple communications to clarify this. But that is our, and, and Magnus is the, the industry leader in school health administration. So we, we feel confident in its ability to serve as a really robust tool. So there was a question about, which I think we, we probably answered, but how do we feel confident that we are able to turn to face to face? And are we able to flip to remote on a quick turnaround? Which we certainly believe we are, everything's designed to be flexible and adaptable and to, to transition as the, the curve of the pandemic would require. We also had a question about, are we getting a lot of inquiries for admission? Because we offer face to face, as there has been discussion of many private schools becoming more of an option for families now. We continue to inquiries, we've gotten them throughout the summer. We have identified that some classes are now full and we will continue to monitor that. We will not put any more students into a class than we feel safe for that environment. And we're keeping in mind both the remote and the, and the identified face to face students. As we know that that will be a fluid process so that we're able to adapt should they need to come, come in live instruction. So we, we can certainly have a communication, but all of our class sizes are consistent with previous years. And we have this, you know, we, we do go up and down in sections every year, some being two sections, some being three. I know there was a question about that as well, as some grades have two that may have had three some years in the past. There's a lot of factors that go into it, one being the appropriate number of students for a staff, being able to keep the cohort intact better. In some cases, by having fewer sections, we can limit the movement or be able to leverage expertise so that the, the classes can stay more intact as part of the overall schedule. But all of them are in spaces where we feel more than comfortable with the amount of appropriate space that they are able to have and with the, the number of students per staff member. There was a question about, when we talk about the playlists, and maybe either Shannon or Nancy, you can speak to this. As far as are all of the, any apps that are associated with a lesson? You know, how does the family find them? Is that clearly laid out in the playlist or, or what will be the guidance regarding that?
I can answer that. Yes, that is the plan. So when we refer to resources being linked to each activity, that's exactly what we are referring to. It would be linked directly to the CSOL activity or linked directly to the Google Classroom assignment so that there is less room for confusion. You know, we've had great conversations with teachers and in guiding teachers, we've really been able to shape that part of the playlist for ease of the user.
Great, thank you. There's another follow up regarding, if there's any more clarification given what the at-home learners experience will look like as far as what interaction they'll have with their class and, and live, live learning opportunities. So will a full eight to three day student be able to interact with classmates and be in some live instruction, be in live classes? Could you review that please? Shannon or Nancy?
I, I'll, I'll start, but Shannon, you might jump in. We did say that yes, that, that children at home would be receiving instruction, obviously, on a daily basis. And there will be some live pieces to the day. It will not be all day on, and, and live all, all day long. There will some, be some asynchronous instruction. There will also be pairing with students. So a student at home paired with a student in the classroom so that they can, you know, use that time to work together. And that works for both younger and older children. And then there will be check-ins at some point during the week, not on a daily basis, but with the teacher themselves to work with those children in the class who are at home.
Yeah, I think Nancy, you, you said that so well. Our, our, all of our planning is around connecting the at-home learner with their teacher and with their peers. So that will happen in a variety of formats and it will happen in a mix of those formats that were mentioned earlier, that could be one-on-one, could be small group or could be whole group. But as Nancy mentioned, we will not be able to fully livestream a whole entire day, but there will be plenty of opportunities for live connectivity. And as a follow-up to independent activity as well.
Great. And just to build on, on that, I would remind everyone that as we mentioned a few times, it is important that if, that all families do identify what their plan is, at least for the start of school, whether they intend to be remotely or in person, as it really does help us refine our plans and allows the teacher better opportunities to plan for the exact scenario within their learning. We are also in early planning stages of other intentional ways that we can engage the families who are at home so they can have a network and so that also families can be buddied with someone who's in school face to face and someone who's home or some group of them. So that, again, it's all about relationship and maintaining those relationships, which is critical to both the educational experience and the social and emotional wellbeing of all of us. So we know how important that is and it certainly is one of our priorities. So, and I, I did get a question again about, it's, it sounds like you have two options. So yes, if you could, if you have not yet filled out your family form that identifies what you are planning for the fall, that form is going to be extended open through the end of this week. If you're having trouble locating it or if you have the need to have an individual conference, we can certainly facilitate that. Please just contact us so we can make sure that you get whatever you might need. We had a question about if a, if a family felt that if at some point during this unique year experience, that maybe the, their choice of path for their child might need to be assessed from Montessori versus primary. Is that, what would they do? How would they approach that, that conversation? Nancy, I mean, I know that is something that comes up whether or not we're in these unique circumstances. So would you just want to speak to that a little bit?
Yes, I, if, if, if a parent is concerned about whichever path their children are in, you would certainly contact the teacher first. That's always our first point of contact is to work with the teacher who's working with the child. But then, then I would be brought into the conversation. And that's what's so great about NFA. If, if, if one particular area is not working for a child, we do have the other way. And it's all children are, the goal for them all is exactly the same. How they get there obviously is different, but the goal is the same.
Thank you. Another question came in with a clarification about the cohort concept and how that impacts students traveling or not traveling, in particular for those grades that are building group for math. So I'll, I'll defer to the academic team, but as a whole, we have designed the master's schedule so that we have limited any movement of cohorts of kids as much as possible. So for the most part, kids will be with the same group of kids for almost the entire school day, with some minor exceptions that, you know, have to be tweaked. Or obviously if there was some sort of a emergency situation or what have you. But Mr. Paluso or Ms. Craig, do you want to expand on that? Did I, did I cover it well?
I think you did very well. And to be specific, the, the people, the children in seventh grade are separated differently than anybody else for math groups because that's the way it had to be this year in order to prepare them, as I mentioned earlier, for, they, for algebra. And they are as well in eighth grade, but the, the seventh grade group has, will be in two groups, the one, one math group and then one homeroom cohort.
Great, thank you. We do get questions concerning, you know, if we have to have a substitute for a teacher who might need to quarantine or be out even just for a routine issue. And then how we are able to utilize staff to monitor all these protocols. And I'll say it's a twofold answer. We are certainly actively recruiting new subs and in conversation with, with folks. We certainly encourage you, if you know of any substitute teachers who might be considered and to vet it, please, you know, encourage them. There is an application open right now. And also, all of us as a school staff have expanded responsibilities to help maintain and monitor the protocol. So all of our, all of our roles will, will be slightly different and make sure that we're all working in collaboration in that regard. There's another question about, you know, a, a child that, as far as, you know, being, you know, disciplined or reprimanded or corrected if they're not wearing a mask properly. And what if they're having some difficulty, you know, either using the mask or if they're having a health concern while wearing the mask? I think I'll, I'll defer the second half to Bridget Bradenham, who's better equipped to explain some of what we would be looking for as far as the proper and appropriate use of a mask. But in general, you likely said before, it would be like any other safety concern. If we were walking the children and someone went into a driveway, we would have to remind them that that's not safe and we don't do that. If a student was going too high in a jungle gym, we would remind them that that's not safe and that's not something that we do. We would handle it in, in a kind and, and supportive manner, but be clear that this is something that we have to have everyone do. But to the other piece, as far as if a child's either struggling with the proper use of a mask or is having a, a challenge while wearing a mask, Bridget, how would we respond to that?
I would hope that I would be called and I could go to the location and assess him or her and figure out how we can make it work. But it's going to be a case by case basis, you know. But obviously, if they're having, like if they have an anatomical issue with wearing a mask, then they might not be able to come to school. We have a wonderful virtual option for that. But otherwise, I think the children have been really doing a great job of learning and adapting. And I think maybe a little, a little lesson and encouragement might go a long way.
Thank you. And then we have some other questions concerning the cohorting and what the size are. Now, because as you can see behind me in this space, our spaces are very varied around campus. And so our, our class sizes does vary depending upon the program. In general, Montessori classes are often slightly larger than the pre-primary or primary because of the way instruction is designed. But to that end, they also have additional staff and additional space to balance that out. So we are not changing the Montessori groupings from what they had been. They will be similar to previous years in those same spaces, but with appropriate protocols and precautions. We have made some adjustments to those students in the houses who stay a full day to limit and to lessen the amount of movement. So that, for example, the old, those students that are in the White House will be in the White House all day long. The afternoon, three and four-year-old Montessori students, those who are on the north campus will move down to the FOMP on campus, but they will still be within a relatively contained cohort of kids between the afternoon and the morning. And there will be protocols in place to clean the vans before transmission. The after-school program is entirely on the FOMP on campus. Right now, there's a, a small number of students that would need to move from the north campus down to the FOMP on campus. We'll have similar protocols and limited numbers of students being transported at a single time. Right now, understandably, as you're making your decisions for this whole school day, many families have not yet made a determination about the after-school program. But so far, it is trending to be a, a smaller program. And we certainly feel confident that we can well, well staff that and well space the after-school program. And like the, during the school day program, the majority of their time, where they're permitting, will be outdoors in the after-school program. We know that there's a certain level of fatigue of being in a, a more structured environment, but we still have to maintain healthy protocols. But since there's the ability to give more mask breaks when the students are outdoors and still succeed apart, that is how we're going to structure the after-school program. If you have questions about the after-school program in particular, or you still need to register, I would ask you to contact Nancy Nadler or Director Business Operations to, to register or to clarify if there's going to be a change in your after-school needs this year. I haven't answered a lot of questions, got to make sure that I'm not missing any questions. There is a question about the official classroom assignments. So I will remind everyone that there is, you know, there is still some fluid nature as we finalize those class lists. So while there are some draft lists within Google Classroom, because we have to load up all of our rosters, we still have to adapt some of the placements. So please don't assume that anything is set in stone because there are, you know, factors that can cause us to have to make changes within the class schedule. I would defer to our academic team if we have a sense of when those lists would become official or, or how we could, you know, give guidance to family in that part.
Ryan, I would say that you did a good job explaining that. And we did put that in our summer communications several times too, that, that this, the rostering, we can't wait to do that because there's every, every subscription that we have has to be rostered by hand. So we had to get that started. I, I would say that the official lists could, would most likely be ready by, by September 1st.
Great, thank you. So there is a question too about if we go fully virtual. You know, are there, are there some examples of how adaptations for the Montessori program in a virtual setting? Like what some of the initial things we've, we've learned from last spring or ways that haven't had this greater amount of planning time, that we can be more prepared? We're able to provide that? Either Nancy or Shannon, if there's.
I think that's something we'd like to provide in the near future. It's certainly being informed by, as we said, the feedback that we've received, but also being informed by conversations with those teachers to, to make those plans. It's something that we'd like to provide in a more detailed fashion for, for all families soon. But we still are working through those details with teachers.
To, a few components, just to build on that, you know, to give some example is, we know in the first phases of the school year, we will have a process for those families who know they'll be remote to get some of their supplies separately so that they have everything. And there is a plan for some of those early weeks of school to help provide resources and guidance for what you could have on hand in your house to better support a Montessori program for your children. And there'll be further guidance coming on that in the next few weeks as we finalize some of those. Another question came up regarding concern about allergies or seasonal allergies being similar symptoms to COVID. And so how will that, and, and the concern that maybe it'll be even increased symptoms because of the greater outdoor time. So Bridget, how would we manage that? I think it would be partially the conversation with your child's physician. If your physician- If your physician can validate that this is a symptom of another medical condition and we can document that, then that would slightly change our response, correct?
Yes. In addition, maybe be, you know, proactive and start, you're being proactive by asking this question, so thank you, but also proactive by taking the Claritin or Allegra, you know, before school starts, if you know your child has an allergy to something that's outside. So it, you know, it's in their system and working effectively before the start of school. But as Ryan said, a note from the physician would be, you know, encouraged and recommended and essential. Not be sent home.
Thank you. We did have another question on maybe what will the first days of school look like and how can families feel comfortable having an understanding of what the new cohort models will look like? I'll, I'll speak to a bit of that first. One of the things that will happen first is our focus on those first few days and potentially the first full week will be on social and emotional learning and that building of community and speaking to that emotional need. We know our kids went through, they have, they have a grieving process. They didn't have the spring that they were meant to have. They didn't have the level of closure that they were meant to have. And they have, you know, different levels of uncertainty. So meeting that, that basic, you know, looking at Maslow, meeting that basic human need first is a lot of what, just building that routine and security and this is what the new normal is, at least for right now, and making them feel safe and at ease and adjusting to the differences in their cohorts. All families will be getting information specific to their levels of children that'll give more details as obviously some of the logistics will play out differently for our youngest learners versus our oldest learners. Also, one of the communications we'll be sharing is virtual tours of all of our spaces so that children and families can see their spaces ahead of time and see what is different this year and have that conversation. Some of you may have had your children view tonight. I think tonight our vision was more as a parent communication, but we will identify those future opportunities that will be more a parent-child opportunity where they could sit together and you could sit together and help ease their apprehension. We know that, you know, many of them, really all of them are just so desperate to be back in their school environment, whatever that means, being physically here or virtually here, but being with their peers. So we're sure that they have lots of questions. Anyone want to add to that as far as how we're going to explain the schedule to families that may be different based on the age of their child or any other changes in their routines?
I think that we need to be aware that those first couple of days without, without COVID, children would be learning routines and getting used to different practices in their new classrooms and all those kinds of things. So certainly, everybody would be involved with the social emotional learning, as Dr. Colleen mentioned. But I think some of those times in those first days, the children who are in school are going to be learning some practices and procedures that would not be needed for the children who are at home. So we wouldn't have the, there wouldn't be live streamed for those pieces. So on the playlist, you might see routines or practice of routines or whatever. And then maybe, maybe the children who are home would use some of the subscription things that we have invested in or read or those kinds of things. But for those particular practices, they wouldn't, there's not a need for them to be part of it. But they wouldn't last forever. So those first couple of days, there might be some extra time allotted or needed for children in school face to face to learn some procedures that would be different from what they've had before.
Thank you. We had a question too about airflow and fresh air and air quality. So in general, the best, the best air is fresh air and is the outdoors. So using outdoor spaces and keeping as many windows open and doors open during instruction times with monitoring so that fresh air can have access to the classroom spaces. We have also obtained low volume as far as noise volume, box fans to help circulate air in spaces like here at the second floor of FOMPON, as well as having a protocol that in the morning, all windows will be open prior to the start of school and be closed by our facilities team when necessary in the evening. But as much as possible, having fresh airflow and looking to maximize the movement of fresh air to the, to the classroom spaces is important. Those spaces that have centralized air conditioning units, being the newer part of the Commons area on the FOMPON campus and James Anthony Hall, they all have recently had filters replaced, HEPA filters that are CDC approved and aligned with those guidelines for safe air quality and they will be changed orderly and monitored regularly. Let's see. So there's a question about devices. So to answer questions, my child is learning remote. So there will be one-to-one devices provided for all students this year if we are fully remote. Students in grades three through eight will have a one-to-one device that can go home with them when they are face-to-face instruction as well. Should we go fully remote, we will make a system available so families can access any given a device for use at home. We have changed the policy and there will be a formal policy coming out to families to agree to have the device and the responsibility of having the device. We provide that through school. There will be a small insurance of about $40 to help protect the device should there be damage to the device. And that'll all be laid out very clearly in the plan, but we have made accommodations. And during the school day, that also means that no devices will be shared so that we can limit contamination. So every child in their classroom will only be using a single device. There is a question too about, is the school closing based on the judge, on whose judgment? What is the determining authority? So as a general rule, all schools, public and private, do you have to align their decisions with the determination made by the Department of Public Health, which is statewide administered locally by the city of Philadelphia and county of Philadelphia? So should there be determination made statewide or citywide that we would have to align with, we would certainly follow that decision. And that, you know, in the spring, we had already made a decision for a short-term closure and then we extended it based on the guidance of the governor. So should a change happen, that might be one way we'd have. We certainly could make the decision ourselves if we felt there, it warranted it due to the exact scenario going on here. But certainly it would be within a conversation with recommendations from the Department of Public Health. A question about how will we be able to monitor children during recess period to make sure that all protocols are observed? So first, I mean, I think the biggest step in that is we are keeping the kids in cohort groups and giving them really more defined spaces where they are so then we can observe them more closely and they are within their cohort group. And we will have staff monitoring and, and after the recess room has been used for the lunch period, it will be disinfected again before it is used by aftercare and then before it's used the following day. So we do have levels of safeguards in place. There's a question about information on busing. So I will remind you first, the best resource, Pam England, who's my assistant, is also supporting transportation and she is working each district. Each district will set their policies and their process differently. So it will, it is not a one-size-fits-all that there's one approach. So I would say if you have any questions, it's best, the first step would be to talk with Pam if you have a question or with your local district to make sure, are there any changes? For the most part, we've been identifying if there's districts that have said that there's going to be a major change. We've been practically reaching out to those families. There has been a significant change in the city of Philadelphia where they have asked families by mail to identify if they are planning on using the bus or not using the bus. I have heard that some folks may have missed that communication. So we will probably, we will be reaching out to make sure that we can get it clarified. And so I apologize in advance that some of you, all of you in Philadelphia are probably getting some communication from us to confirm your decision, which you may or may not have already told the city of Philadelphia. But we just want to verify that because there has been some confusion about that. As I know, there's a different benefit being offered to families who might not be choosing the bus this year. So unfortunately, it's, it's hard for me to answer specifically, but certainly follow up with us if you have a, you know, a specific concern about your district in busing. We also did get a question about, you know, should we go fully remote? Will there be a change in our tuition model? We certainly, it is our plan, our expectation that we offer a full robust learning experience, either face-to-face or remotely. And the investment that we have to use to provide that education does not change whether or not we are physically on campus or not. So we are, we're not able to change the tuition model at this time, should there be another shutdown for a short or a longer period. So there's a question, how quickly would, would we shut? We are, we are prepared, last time, we could shut, you know, within, within a 24 to 48 hour period, depending on what portion of the week we ran. So certainly, and so we are ready to do that on a very flexible basis. Also, as we said, another question came in about if you change your, your in face-to-face or remote mid-year or some, what you'd want to change, we would probably just ask that you would wait till the next, start of the next week. So if you were home one week, not come back on the Wednesday, but maybe come back the following Monday so that the teachers have a little bit of flexibility in getting ready to welcome your child back face-to-face and you have time to prepare your child as well. We remind families, I think most of you got the, the note that we are changing or modifying the uniform this year, that gym uniforms will always be acceptable in light of the fact that there's, they can be more comfortable, especially in the other circumstances we're dealing with and because of the outdoors. We'll also be a little bit more relaxed in our staff dress as we are going to be actively outdoors with the kids a lot too. So sneakers and the leg are more appropriate when we're playing or learning outdoors so much. How will teachers be available regarding answering questions or supporting families that are home if they have a specific need or a routine question? So either Mr. Paluso or Ms. Craig, do you want to speak to that?
We are providing times for teachers, all teachers, to have some specific times during the week to check in with students who are at home. So that would be during the school day and you will be notified of the time. But certainly, if there's a specific question or a need, you don't need to wait for that. You can email and, and we'll get back to you, especially if a child has a question about an assignment or something to that nature. Shannon, is there anything you want to add to that?
I think, I think you hit the nail on the head, Nancy. I do think we still would, would have to say that there's a need for, you know, respected turnaround time. And I understand that if there is a student at home who needs support, it's a little trickier to navigate that need to not have direct access to the teacher. But we do have to give leeway and understand that the teacher will be fully engaged on campus.
We also had a few questions of similar nature regarding the lunch program and how that'll be different this year. So we will have a modified purchase lunch option for families through Apple Annie. We're, we're working with them on a limited menu of cold options that can be delivered to the class environment in a closed container, in a, in a ground bag or something similar so that we follow the appropriate protocols. Certainly, many families will opt to send in a lunch, which is also perfectly acceptable. You can send it in, in a reusable container and you can use reusable water bottles. That was another question. But they all should go home every night and get cleaned. For the most part, lunch bags will stay in the school bag and that school bag will stay as close to the students' assigned workspace so that we're limiting the interaction of personal objects in proximity to other students. So that is the overall plan. We will have often eating outdoors, but we cannot probably, we certainly, we will always eat outdoors. When students are indoors, it is, you know, acceptable through the guidelines of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania that they would have to move their masks without limiting that time, but they will still be six feet apart so that they're maintaining social distance and they will be observed to make sure that there's no infringement of space between students during that time. Another question came in about exactly how we're doing temperature checks. So we do have no touch thermometers for every academic space so that they will be able to be done within the classroom. So there will not be the need to go to a centralized location for those midday temperature checks. Bridget, do you want to expand on that at all?
I think you said it adequately, that the teachers will have them in the classroom. So for the lunch, you know, the lunch check or the midday check, the teachers will do that. It's a non-touch thermometer. There will be one at the entrance in the morning for students as well at each of the entrances.
We had a question about car line and this fiscal process. So because everything has changes here, we are redesigning the car line process and it will look different. There's multiple challenges to that. That is also part of why it's important that we confirm the number of buses and what families' plans are because that will impact our design as well. So, and also, as we mentioned earlier, we'll be using more doors this year. So every class, we assign a specific door and only a few classes will at most go through any single door. FOMPON is probably the most complicated with that. But even in James Anthony Hall, each grade will have their own entrance to the building. So that will change and so we are still finalizing exactly what that will look like. Every, all families will get a map and probably a video to explain that process to them as they get ready for the start of the school. So we do have some more health questions, Bridget. One, you know, clarifying the impact for siblings. So if there is a suspected case or a confirmed case, could you please review what the impact would be for siblings as far as staying home or not staying home? And then there's another question.
Okay. Well, I did say before, if a child has any of the aforementioned symptoms that are stated in the policy and they are sent home, they're asked to get seen by their healthcare provider and there would be no need for their sibling to stay home unless they had exposure to a confirmed case of COVID. And then in that, in that case, they would stay home with the siblings. Is that clear? So if there is a confirmed case of COVID that either a student is exposed to or a student has a confirmed case of COVID, those siblings would stay home. If there is no confirmed case of COVID that anyone has had exposure to and a child just has a stuffy nose and goes home and we ask them to just do a virtual visit with their, you know, pediatrician or healthcare provider to provide some, some feedback, that does not mean a sibling needs to stay home.
Now, another question that kind of follows up on that regarding, so running nose. So if, if a child, for example, had the single symptom of a runny nose, would that require they stay home or is there, would there be more information to know about that exact situation to be able to?
If they have a runny nose and it's problematic in the classroom and I'm notified as the school nurse that I need to assess the situation, I'm probably going to be calling the parent because if it's, it's a severe enough runny nose that I'm being called to the area, that I think they need to go home. Is it? Is that clarification? If it's due to allergies and it's been persistent, I would hope that they would, you know, contact their healthcare provider anyway because a child that's had a runny nose for a month, that'd be a pain. So hopefully they go see the doctor anyway about that.
Thank you.
Can I answer the question? I'm sorry.
I think so. I'm pretty sure. We'll certainly make sure that, again, if we miss any questions or you feel we didn't, you know, fully answer a question, we certainly, we will have a formal, you know, Q and A document as an end product of this evening that'll be coming out, you know, probably beginning of next week. And we're giving updates on our landing page for the reopening plan on the website. So certainly look out for future communications. We did another question to make sure everyone knows that we will be providing devices, so families do not need to plan on purchasing a device should, in the event that you're going to be staying home. We are still finalizing. We are still finalizing how the drop off process will look like. And and there may be some flexibility in how that timing happens compared to last year or previous years. Another clarification. So for the most part, teachers are the ones moving, not the students. There is one, one exception in for the seventh grade math classes because they need to be divided into three groups. That there will be kids moving just within that one wing that they have. They have three distinct classrooms and it's still just within that unit. But as a general rule, the enrichment teachers will travel to the classrooms. And in the middle school where their immersion are finalized, the teachers will move from classroom to classroom and the students will stay in one spot. Make sure that I didn't. So there's a question, will the kids. Interact with cohorts after COVID becomes a non-issue? So should we be able to loosen some of our protocols or lessen some of our responses later in the year? Something that will change some of our responses, but we will not be able to create an entirely new master schedule. So there'll be some modifications, you know, should the conditions warrant it that we could lessen the social distancing restrictions. But, you know, we have designed it in mind for, as a core for the schedule to remain intact for the school year. So we did a question about teachers and how they're feeling. So similar, as we mentioned, we've been having really intentional meetings throughout the course of the summer. And really we're blessed for really engaged participation by our faculty and wanting to volunteer to be parts of this, these committees. We meet regularly. We had a similar town hall earlier today with them. And they had questions and we answered them. We only really had a few, to be honest, because they've had many opportunities and they've been, you know, engaged in the process of designing this. I think their biggest thing is they're just so anxious and excited to get into their classroom and figure out exactly how they're going to physically set it up. So that's, that's where they are right now in getting into the rooms and and designing for their return to school and welcoming back your kids. I think they are just so anxious to be with your kids, either remotely, virtually or in person. And they are very excited for the return. I did, I wouldn't miss, I want to make sure we had several people wanting specifically thank our panelists, especially Bridget and Nancy and Shannon for all of the expertise they've shown. And for being such a resource to all of us. Let me see, there might be a couple more. I don't want to miss them all. So there was a question about how we are supervising our outside cleaning staff. And so we are creating checklist and supervision processes to make sure that we're inspecting and supervising their work. And and changing the shifts of our own facility staff and and their roles and what their, their day to day work looks like. To make sure that we are being very vigilant and making sure that we're meeting these really high standards. And meeting very regularly with Interstate, who does a lot of independent schools in our area. And has, you know, very specific, you know, knowledge of what the best practice guidelines are, especially in light of the pandemic. We asked her, there was a question, more guidance on what is an acceptable face cover? Specifically a question about gators or about ones with the valves. Could you speak to that, Bridget?
We specifically did not mention valves. We would prefer if they did not wear the valves. Gators are controversial and we are probably going to be taking them out of acceptable face coverings. So we want two layer face, face covering and either loops around the ears or like loops behind the head. And it has to cover the nose and the mouth. I prefer the little wire in the nose too. I think it helps. I can send you some Etsy links if anyone wants any. I can't put anybody too much.
So a reminder that we will keep some of these things. We had a question about like what kinds of things you need to be getting to get ready for school. So one is first and foremost, the face mask that's comfortable for your child. I think your children probably are, you know, familiar with masks, but make sure that they're getting more used to and comfortable with how to put their mask on and off themselves. So getting their mask. A lanyard is a great best practice so that we're requiring that you get a lanyard that you can keep your your mask on. Kind of like the old chains we used to have the binkies on, if that makes sense to everybody, so that you be able to keep your mask on your person and it doesn't get. Mixed up with somebody else's. And that's also why we're not doing brandet masks. We want every family needs to pick the mask that's best for them. And it's better if all the masks look different and distinct so that we can limit the concern that somebody isn't sure which mask is their own. We will have backup disposal mask on hand for both staff and students should they need a replacement mask or somehow if they arrive and they've forgotten one at home. In general, you should have two masks at least a day because they could get soiled or hot. So you want to be able to change your mask midday and it's best to have a paper bag that's breathable that you can store them in. All students are to get a yoga mat and that is to allow for flexible time outdoors. We are going to clarify, there was some requests whether or not the mats will be going home every day or if they could be kept in the classroom. So we're assessing that and the logistics of that. So we will let you know what the protocol will be for that. Any other items that we're saying families want to get?
I don't think so, but could I mentioned a couple of people were asking about the arrival dismissal of bike riders and walkers. Because that will be, it's not brand new, but it's, it's, there are going to be more of them. And so we are working on those plans as well as the arrival and dismissal for everybody. We know, we, we ordered two bike racks so that we'll have them on, one on each campus. And there will be some kind of supervision. And we also talked, we have in the past requested a crossing guard and got nowhere, but we will do that again and see if we get someplace. But there will be staff that is that's assigned as part of their duties to to pay attention to the bike riders and the walkers as well as we have car riders and bus riders. And the other thing, Ryan, somebody asked was about the, the daily bags. There will be no daily bags in use and the children will not use lockers until we, we might, we might have to do that when coats come into play. But then we're going to, we have a plan and so that they're not at all out there at the same time using them.
Great, thank you. So there, there was a question, one about doing a hybrid model, you know, could a family, if they didn't feel comfortable coming back to class every day. Right now, we're not able to provide. So and we think that we can do the best job with the two models that we provided and designed for, and that we have the support and pace to do. So unfortunately, that would be, and if you have a specific question to help you discern what is best for you, we would welcome an individual conference about that. So if, when a student decides to come back from virtual, we will certainly, in a very intentional way, make sure that the student eases back into the face to face environment. And and certainly will be a process of the cohort welcoming the student back to the classroom. But understanding that it'll be a period of time to get the child ready for that. And the child may take some time to settle in. We know, you know, I only have two kids, but they're all, they're both entirely different. And one would probably go right back in like they didn't miss a beat and one would probably take a few days to get acclimated. So we also defer to you. You know your child and you know what apprehension they might have. So it's just critical that you share that with us so we can best respond to it. You know, every child is going to have a different experience in that regard. So there is a question about specials. So that will be, so for the most part, while the warmer weather permits, PE will be outdoors. And then for the other enrichments, they will be traveling to the classroom. Obviously, there's, there's some changes in what can and cannot be done. So some of the, the subject matter will look a little different. For example, you know, music is going to be different in a classroom than it would be in its own distinct classroom. Art, you know, there might be some change in what materials we use based on the teacher having to be mobile. But we're, the teachers have been planning and have been being very creative all summer long as we've given them time to redesign their curriculum this year. I think we can probably only take a couple more questions as time will allow. But we certainly will go through any that we may have missed and make sure that we can respond to them. Some of them do overlap. So I want to see if there's any, you know, completely unique ones that we could include. So there is, this is an important question. So there will be distinct health areas and there is a distinct isolation area on both campuses. So that if a child is, has a suspected COVID symptom where they can be separated until they can be picked up, which as Bridget mentioned. We ask it to be no more than an hour from when we contact you. And then we have created a whole new health and wellness space for the nurses on the Fopon campus, a former classroom. So the, the previous nurse's office is the isolation area. And one of the former fourth grade classrooms is an expanded area for both Bridget and our, the other part-time nurses provided by the city of Philadelphia. So we have taken that in into our planning as well. And there's a separate room in the James Anthony Hall building where a student can be isolated with, able to be observed and access to bathroom facilities. On if they're, you know, experiencing symptom that we would suspect that they, they could be a risk to the rest of the community. Is that good, Bridget? Do I do okay with that one?
Yes, thank you.
So there, there are some questions that are a little, there isn't like a one set answer to about the different class sizes. So I'd say our, our class sizes are consistent for, you know, I would say with previous years and the fact that our, as a rule, our direct instruction, instruction pre-primary, primary classes are smaller than the Montessori classes. But the Montessori classes are still a small size for their space and the amount of staff we provide it to supervise the kids. But we are setting caps on those classrooms to make sure that we wouldn't add students that we couldn't accommodate in them. But there isn't a set one size fits all size. And then certainly some grades will have three sections, some grades will have two, based on the number of students that we have. And we certainly, while we are always keeping our doors open to welcome families that have identified NFA to be a right choice for them. We want it to be a right fit for their family. And we are looking for families that are seeing us as their, their new educational home, not a temporary transition. We did get, there will be bike racks in both campuses that came up again. So again, as we prepare materials that could speak to the, the different typical schedule in the classrooms. At different grade levels, be it, you know, four to eight or in the Montessories or the primaries. It will give you a better idea of what a typical day will look like in school or out of school. But the, the assignments and the time, you know, of direct instruction will be very similar, but will not be in lockstep if you're at home or in the classroom. And it will be pretty consistent. There will be, like in any other school year, there will be anomaly days where this Friday was something special or something different that doesn't look like it typically does. But for the most part, most days will look similar. You know, another variable will be outdoor time will change based on, you know, we are getting some, some coverings. But there will be times when it may be so inclement that we couldn't go outdoor. So that may change the day to day schedule. So I. I hate to close this, but I, I think we've, we've covered the majority of the questions. I, we will carefully review and see those that we may have missed and find ways to communicate those with you. I certainly want to thank our panelists. So especially thank you to Bridget and to Nancy and to Shannon for all that you've done this evening. And certainly it's not very different than all you're doing each and every day, round the clock, worrying about how we can best provide for the kids at NFA. So we really thank you for all that you've given tonight and every day. Thank you all for being here and these, these wonderful questions that are so important. And really are a key component to our planning. We, we could not have the plan that we created without the ongoing questions and guidance that you've provided to us and the feedback you provided to us. And we will only be able to really fully fine tune these plans with that conversation being ongoing. So we thank you very much and are very, very grateful. We thank Mr. Militia behind the scenes for doing all the tech support to make WebEx happen. I hope you found this platform to be user friendly. We find that it's easier for a large group gatherings. We'll be using it for many things this year, including liturgies to school-wide events, to parent talks. So hopefully we'll be able to use new platforms to keep engaged and keep the conversation going. Analyst, any, any final words or any last words of wisdom?
I would just like to say thank you, the whole NFA community. I feel like we started this night on that, at that angle of saying this is all about community and we can do this if we do it together. I think we have always been in great partnership. But I think the spring brought us even closer. And I, I just want to thank everybody for their support here tonight and continuously.
And don't forget to contact us if you have any other questions. And we're excited for the school year to begin. It's our 100th, everybody.
Exactly. It's been 100 incredible years. And, you know, I think we, we learned that our 99th and our 100th are particularly memorable. But certainly as we remind ourselves often over the past few months, we have weathered many storms here at NFA. We've done it because we are united in mission and all doing this as one community, supporting each other, all in partnership. Parents, teachers, staff, and children, alumni, and with the support of the St. Joseph's and those guidance and prayers that we rely on every day. I keep you all in my prayers every day. Please do the same. Please rest and take care of yourselves this summer and be ready to be back in the swing of new things this fall. Thank you and God bless.